What is happening here? Did you have a beard the other day?
Yeah, I got rid of that today.
You're giving this a whirl?
Okay.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Sorry that I'm in the dark. I had to go to an upstairs bedroom to have it be quiet and for some reason I'm I don't have perfect lighting. I'll have to get my teenagers to work on that for me.
Your, um, your mic is giving you sort of like a almost robotic sound, Franny.
Do you want me to try my other headphones or no headphones at all? Let me try the other ones.
Is that better or not? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's good because that means I could put on my headband. Oh my gosh, I need a haircut. When will that ever happen?
That's Ann, our most recent rescue cat.
How recent? How recent?
Two months ago.
Oh, okay.
She seems to be acquitting herself well.
She's basically very well adjusted, but she is only comfortable eating if one of us is in her room with her. Otherwise she will starve, kind of like a panda bear.
Was she abused?
No, where are you going?
Do you think she was abused, Steve?
Um, I don't think so. I think she's an old cat, so I think she's just very shy, sensitive.
One of my kids is like that. My middle child is just really getting stressed out with all the noise and all the people in our house. She keeps putting her headphones on during meals. She sort of had it with the rest of us. Matt, how are people in Vermont?
So far, so good. I mean, I think it's A, because it's so sparsely populated and rural. I think that they're a little bit They're a little bit delayed compared to everywhere, basically. But, um, they're under lockdown orders and They've already canceled school for the rest of this school year.
Wow.
So, uh, I think that's been, especially because my mom is a special educator and works for the public school system. So that's been, um, That's been sort of the biggest thing that's happened lately and, you know, adjusting.
How does that work? Do they pay the teachers? I imagine the unions would be all over that.
Um, yeah, they, hi Barbara.
Hi Matt.
Hi Barbara.
Yeah, they're working on trying to do e-learning stuff, but I think
Hard for special ed.
Varying degrees of success because of broadband accessibility is an issue in certain parts of the state.
Right. In our house, we can only get, um, we have no cell coverage at our cottage and so we have wifi, but you can't use a cellphone. You can only, you know,
Right.
connect to the internet by wifi. So cellphones don't work at all where our house is.
Look who's joining us.
We might get a couple honorary.
Right.
Let's see. I don't know who this one is, so I'm gonna have to
Is Jeffrey gonna be able, are we gonna be able to see Jeffrey, Matt?
Yes, I think he hasn't joined us yet.
Nice stash.
Thank you.
This has the same thing going on.
Hi, who is this with the 3220 number?
The town engineer.
Hi Doug.
Hi Doug.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi Doug.
Do I look dark to you? Like Steve and Matt look very bright.
I know. I was saying I have the same problem. I don't know how to do the lighting better in here. Maybe I could try shifting around a little bit.
I just feel like you and I look dark.
I agree, and I already texted my I texted people in my family to ask for lighting help and, um, let me see what I can do. Without completely dismantling myself.
Yeah, right back.
Is that a little bit better?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I haven't watched a U- wait, who's that?
I think that's, Linda just joined us.
Hi.
Linda? I want to see Linda.
Hi Franny.
Hi.
Who is that?
That's, huh?
That's Steve's cat.
Oh, that's Steve's cat. Linda, are we gonna see you?
You don't see me?
I don't see you, Linda.
We don't see you, Linda. Not yet.
Let's see.
We have somebody named iPod 3, so I'm gonna admit them, I guess.
iPod 3. Somebody has the TV on or the radio.
Steve, I didn't even know you had a cat.
We have three rescue cats.
Have you always had them or for a while?
Started a couple of years ago, getting rescue cats.
That's so nice.
A group called TBJ, Pet Spring Joy. Okay.
So Steve, what kind of light do you, why is your, what kind of lighting do you have? Why is your lighting so much better?
It's probably
I'm just in a bedroom and it's the wall right behind me. I don't know.
I was sitting in front of the light. That was the problem. Now I've turned so the light's in front of me.
That's what I have too.
I just have over light.
Um, can I talk? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we've got you.
Yay, okay, thank you.
But wait, I don't want to see me. Where's Matt? My big picture is me.
If you go up in the top right, it should, it might say speaker view or gallery view. You want it to be on gallery view and then it will pull up everybody all at once.
Meeting settings?
Um, let's see.
No. Gallery view. Okay, can you hear? Switched to gallery view. I see it on the left side.
It's on the left side, okay.
Mine, oh, right. I switched to gallery view, but now I see Steve.
Okay.
This is the Brady Bunch view that I've heard about. Exactly.
Matt's the dad.
My big picture is Steve and Matt's in the part of the Brady Bunch now.
I don't have any big, I just Okay, I don't know why you can't see me.
You're in the dark, Jeffrey. You gotta turn some lights on.
I have lights on. I don't understand. Can you see me now?
Barely. You're like a scary witness protection mayor. You need to be facing, the light facing you.
Let me see something.
It's very tricky.
It is tricky.
He looks the best I can do. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's very tricky.
It's like a witness protection program.
Yeah.
But I still have Steve and then I had Jeffrey, but I can't get Matt back to the middle.
I don't know if you can move them around or not.
I don't know if you can move them around. Well, Marnie just moved around. Mine just moved around.
I don't see Marnie.
It might be based on who's talking.
I don't know why I can't see me.
I can't see you at all, Linda.
I don't see me either.
Linda, do you have a sticker over your camera?
You know, that could be the case, Franny. Let's see. There it is. Yeah, there it is. Because we never use it.
Right, right.
But do you guys see Marnie and Jeffrey?
Yeah, Marnie's, Marnie's right there beside you in my screen.
Does anybody know why this light isn't working? It's gotta be something with the computer.
I think it's the light in the room.
No, I have all the lights on.
Oh.
See, I have all the lights on.
I don't know. I had to turn so that the light was like facing my face instead of behind me.
Um, okay.
You know, if you want to have Matt be the lead, you can pin him.
What does that mean, Marnie?
If you, if you click on his name, it says pin video.
If I click on his name?
And then that
Pin video?
Yeah, if you pin that.
Perfect, Marnie. Thank you. And now I see you. Hi.
Um, so
I don't see Ron.
Yeah.
Ron, do you have a face, Ron?
I don't have a face or a, um, sound for Ron yet.
How many people do you have as part of the Brady Bunch? I only have 1, 2, 3, 5.
We should have 10.
I have 10. Doug's on phone. Doug's by phone.
Can you see all 10 at one time?
No, I can, I can see, I think I can see everybody who's joined except for, I don't see Doug's face, which we know about. And I don't see anything for Ron other than his name typed in.
But you see everybody else?
Yep.
Well, you can get everybody on if you do gallery view, but otherwise you have to kind of flip back and forth with that little arrow.
I'm on gallery view. Isn't that weird?
So should I, um, should I start to admit people in, admit people in here?
Are we doing a work session?
Um, I'll just admit people so they can be in here and just leave them muted. So I'll just let people know that.
Phil Eagleburger.
Yes.
Marnie.
All right, so, so for those who just joined, we're about to, we're about to start the council work session. So I, I still have you on mute at the, in the meantime, and then when the meeting is gonna start, I'll go around and just confirm that I have the right names for everybody and the mayor will open it up for public comment, et cetera.
All right, no worries.
Okay, I'm trying to get another light here, so hold on.
Is Ron definitely connected?
I'm not sure. Let me go grab my phone and make sure.
What about while we're waiting, what about this show thumbnail video? What does that mean?
I don't know. I wouldn't mess with anything right now.
I wouldn't mess with any buttons.
I think we've got this working as well as can be expected.
I suppose we still have five minutes before 7:15 is when we said that it would be the
Hey, for what it's worth, my video is not there, but this is Mike Sullivan from tomorrow today. I'm here.
Hey Mike.
Hey Mike.
Mike, I'm gonna, um, well, let's see. I'm gonna mute you deeper now if that's okay with you.
Um, This is Ron. I don't know if I'm muted or not.
Hi Ron, so you're, you're the 6694?
That's right.
Okay. And who, who do we have that, whose phone number ends in 7915?
Um, that could be one of our extensions. This is Phil Eagleburger.
Okay, great.
Jeffrey, the lighting is better.
I'll have to figure this out another time.
No, it's much better than it was.
I know, but it's not, it's not optimum, optimal.
Jeffrey, is your lamp behind your computer?
No, that didn't work.
Oh.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
We have five minutes, we have four minutes until I'll open it up and turn it over to
Is Morris joining us?
Uh, as far as I know, yes.
So, um, this is being recorded so that anyone that missed the Council work session or the Meeting, are you, are Matt, are we planning to put it on the website?
Yep, I can, I can, I can do that, folks. Yep.
So as you recall, everyone, everybody, this is only gonna work if everybody is muted while the one person is talking and Matt is the director. Um, we have to do this because in my recent experience, if people come on and they're not muted, it can really affect the visuals and it can affect the sound and it's, it's a big mess. You can't control necessarily the background noise. You know, sometimes people, and so I don't, I don't, I want this meeting to, you know, flow and I don't want us to be stopping every minute to try to figure out who has background noise. So we're just gonna mute everybody unless they're talking. And, and I think that Matt, I, Matt, why don't I turn over you to say how you're gonna do the, when people wanna, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go around the way we usually do, you know, starting with Marnie, when I'm, you know, Marnie's gonna conduct the meeting however she wants. But when we do the council session, it'll be just like every other meeting when I call on each of you when, after there's been a presentation.
And I think what I was planning to do is for public, public comments sort of mirror that, that same process there. And I'll just go down the line and, you know, say, Miguel, do you, do you have anything to say? And I'll unmute Miguel and, you know, you can either say yes or no and
And, and we're also, so this is how we're gonna do it for this meeting. And then we will regroup and have a debrief afterward tomorrow. But we, we have to just go with the plan that we've rehearsed and then adjust for, for forthcoming meetings.
I think Matt also sent around the raise hand directions.
Yes, for those, for those who, um, for those who are logged in on Zoom under the, um, There's, I can
Go to participants.
Yeah, Marnie's got it.
Go to participants and then, um, you can, at the bottom right, it says either mute me or raise hand. And you can just click on raise hand. And that was also the same button, lower hand.
So you want us to, that's just another way I'm just mentioning. Well, what, what is our plan? What do you want us to do?
Well, I think the, I think probably what's easiest is if, um, the mayor will go down the line as he usually does. And then, once we move on to the next person, you'll, you'll get muted again. So if, if you have something else to add, maybe at that point you could then raise your hand and I can let the mayor know that you have something else that you'd like to say.
Raise the hand with the computer or physically raise our hand?
There's the, there's the raise the hand button. So it sends a, it sends a, it sends a notification, but if you just want to
Also, if there's a, for the council, if there's a problem, just text Matt. Cause Matt will be reading his text.
Matt, how do you want us to vote? Do you want us to vote with the raise hand thing or do you want us to actually stick our hands on the air?
Um, I think that for that, we should probably do the same thing and go, go, is that okay to do a roll call on each vote?
Yes, we'll do that. Okay, I know that it's 7:16, so I want to call the meeting to order and turn it over to our distinguished council president.
Thank you, Jeffrey. We had just two items on this shortened work session. I think I'll turn to Steve for the first one. And then the mayor is going to talk a little bit about the study group issue. So Steve, you had wanted to talk about how, how the council might want to, to approach the opting in of the environmental code around pesticides. Did you want to say it about that? of the environmental code around pesticides. Did you want to say it about that? I did circulate something from the program manager, which every council member should have gotten explaining it.
Thank you very much, Marnie. Um, yes, what, what I wanted to do in this work session was just introduce the topic. I'm not introducing it as legislation at this point. So we just sort of have a conversation about, I guess really sort of what's the level of interest that we have. If there's, if there's broad interest, then we can, um, ask Ron Bolt, our town lawyer, to start to prepare, uh, the appropriate, um, language for our town code. And if there's not, then we'll figure out, those who are interested will figure out a different path forward. So what we're talking about here is the county's anti pesticide law, commonly referred to as the healthy lawn, uh, regulation. And it is a county regulation that the county abides by. The town of Somerset, for the government of Somerset, has, has already adopted it. Many other incorporated jurisdictions have adopted it. But Somerset hasn't yet. It's, it's very recent. It just went through, it just cleared some court challenges in late 2019, I believe. So a number of towns who are in the process of considering it. This is not the first occasion for Somerset to opt into a county regulation. We have already opted into, I think, four other county regulations. So basically, I want to introduce it. I think it, it makes sense. I think it will, um, improve the health and safety of our environment within Somerset and there is no cost to the town. The county provides all of the education, all of the law enforcement, and assists with engagement with, uh, lawn care companies. I don't know if anyone has any questions? Yes?
Um, I, I guess one question I would have, and maybe this was in the materials and I apologize if I don't remember, but, um, are the residents punished or the landscapers? I, I guess I would be concerned about a situation where, um, you know, I guess that's, I guess when you say the county enforces it and they reach out and educate the landscapers, are they then fining the landscapers or does the, do the fines flow through to the homeowners? I, you know. I guess I have some concerns about that.
So I've had several discussions and I shouldn't, I should emphasize that this is not Steve Circo operating independently. This is working with the environment committee and we've had the county program manager from, sorry, I can't, I, I don't recall, uh, Mary's title. She's come in, she's talked, she's explained the program and she's reassured us that, um, this is a non-confrontational program. They are not out hunting down people. They're not out fining, uh, individuals. I mean, that's, that's not their objective. First or infrequent violators, they, they come out and they educate and they explain the pro, process to the individuals. I think it, that, um, I think, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I believe that any fines that may eventually be issued to repeat offenders, the fines are against the, the lawn care company. Cause lawn care company, they know what the county requires because if they're doing any work, anywhere that the county controls, which is most of the county, they have to abide by this. And I should also emphasize that, I should also mention that the environment committee is not looking to impose this as a, um, short fused or knee jerk reaction that could cause adverse impact on individuals. We're looking to have this become effective November 1st. So well after the conclusion of this summer season, we recognize that some residents may have already signed, uh, lawn treatment contracts. What we'd like to do is set this up so everyone can plan ahead, be aware of it, and then really we're in place for the next year. And the county would come in, provide some education. If we're, if there's positive consensus, um, in this working session, my plan would be to introduce this, this legislation at the next monthly meeting and we could have, um, have the representative from, uh, Montgomery County, speak about the program a little bit for town residents who wanted to get some more details.
I have another question, um, for Ron in connection with this. Ron, can you just, um, remind us all specifically what our action would be if we decided to go forward with this? Would this be adopting or opting in or, or what? Trying to recall what you've taught us about how the municipal laws work.
It would require an ordinance. Currently under chapter 123 of the code, the town lists what county ordinances apply and which do not. And the town of Somerset applies a general exemption approach. The code says, except for the following chapters of the county code that apply, we exempt ourselves from all new county laws. So we'd have to amend that section of the code to expressly adopt into that pesticide law.
Okay. And Ron, is it your experience that this is in fact, um, enforced by the county or does this eventually fall on municipalities?
Well, if, so there, there are two approaches. You know, one would be to adopt it as your own law. Then you would enforce it. Alternatively, if you're just allowing it to apply in the town, then the county would enforce it. And I, I think Steve's suggesting the latter approach, that we just add it to the list of county laws that the county is allowed to enforce in the town.
Have you seen that in practice? And, and for this particular law?
I, you know, I, I haven't prepared a, a list of, of which towns are, are doing what. And I know it's been discussed in, in certain towns, but as Steve noted, it just survived appellate challenge. So frankly, I, I don't think even the county was enforcing it before.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I don't think, oh, go ahead.
I think that we need to allow some, uh, a few minutes for Jeffrey to make, uh, his comments. So is there, are there any other quick questions for Steve and any sense of direction for him?
I, I just think this is the kind of thing we have to hold on. I mean, these are, we're talking about imposing potential sanctions on ourself. I mean, there is a group of people who have some very strong values that they want to, you know, put forward on their own. I get it. And maybe that is how the town really feels, but this is not the kind of thing we do in a seven minute session at a time when I can barely see everybody because all my tiles don't show up all the time. And then we're expected to put it on a, um, an agenda. I don't understand what is happening to this community, but there's something that is being driven forward that is so divisive and so out of what I think the spirit of the town is. I don't even understand it. This is the kind of thing we're going to need months and months to study. It just survived an appellate challenge. We're asking to bring in law enforcement on ourselves. We can't even answer clearly whether or not we would sanction individual homeowners, whether it was under their control or not. I just simply don't understand it and it's part of a broader trend, which I think is so deeply troubling, it's hard to express. And I just think, I, you know, I don't understand why all this is being done at a time when we're stuck at home worrying about how to keep families and businesses together. I don't get it. And so I just, you know, I, I don't think we have any ability to go forward on this right now.
Yeah, um, I, I, I have to say, I think, um, in keeping with Morris, I, I just think for some of these things, we need to slow down a little bit. People have lots of stuff on their minds these days that is far more important than our lawns. People's homes are at stake. Where kids are going to go to school, you know, or when, rather, when they're going to go to school is at stake. Who's going to watch the children tomorrow? This is a young community. At, at least, you know, Marnie and I are retired, uh, Franny is home. The, the majority of the people in this community are not in that situation. The majority of the people in this community are just trying to figure out what's going to happen tomorrow. So to push, to put this on the agenda for next month, um, I, I just think it's, it's not very, it's just wrong. I don't think it's fair to the community. I think we need just to, we need to slow down now and, and focus on what's really important for people here in town.
I want to thank, uh, all the council members who've weighed in on this. I need to leave some time here for Jeffrey. So Steve, I hope you feel like we got this conversation started as you wanted and, uh, Jeffrey, may I turn this over to you?
Okay, so in the interest of time, I know there's only two more minutes. I, I did have a lot more to say, but given the fact that I've been working on this all month, I've been working with the town attorney, the town manager, Marnie, lots of citizens. And given the fact that, um, I, I am going to have a proposal very soon to, to make in terms of forming a study group, I, I'm not prepared to, uh, make a recommendation tonight. So given the time, uh, I will, uh, have something for you by next month.
Anybody want to comment on that or have a question for Jeffrey? If not, then we don't have any other items for this work session.
Jeffrey, I just want to thank you. I'm, I'm actually delighted to hear that it, it's, at least been put off for a month. Thank you.
Okay, are you, are you done, Marnie? You're, Marnie's done. Okay.
Yes.
I know that the time is, uh, okay. I know that the time is 7:30 and I want to call the meeting to order. I want to say that these are unprecedented times that have disrupted normalcy in our everyday lives. That is also the case with town operations. Thank you, everyone, in advance for your patience and cooperation as we work through this process and please bear with us if we encounter any issue. We are learning new technologies and adapting as best as we can under the circumstances. I also want to thank the incredible staff led by Matt for the work, uh, that he's done this month. Linda, our maintenance crew, all of our consultants. And we've really, uh, been able to provide, you know, keep the town functioning and provide as much information as possible and also learn as much as we need from, you know, we spend all of our days on calls with the, uh, federal officials, the state, the county, the nonprofits, different organizations. And so I think we're very well positioned to move forward for what I think will be at least two more months of being sheltered in. So before we get to our regular agenda, I do want to announce a few housekeeping items for this meeting. So as I mentioned during the, um, work session, this meeting is being recorded for records keeping purposes and for those that aren't able to, and it's also a bit of a silver lining. So for those that aren't able to, uh, attend tonight, they can watch it at their leisure this month. Secondly, if we experience security issues, we will immediately end the meeting and send out notification to residents on a rescheduled meeting. I don't think that's going to happen, but I just needed to say that. And finally, because of time and technological constraints, we are asking that residents during public comment parts of the meeting be limited to one comment each and that they will be limited to two minutes at a time. And Matt is going to be, uh, keeping a record of that. And isn't there going to be a buzzer, Matt? I think so. And the town manager will call on residents by listed names or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. So, uh, we will now move to the public comment period. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt to, um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna work, work my way down the line. Um, so this is, I think, sort of in order, I think, that people logged on. Um, so I think if, uh, I'm going to identify you by, uh, either I see you and I knew who it was or, um, there's some people where the, the ID is not quite there. So I'll, I'll identify you by what is showing up and then ask that, um, you please just state your name and, and address for the record and just so that we have the correct information there. So the first person that we have is Miguel Tableau. So Miguel, I'm going to unmute you and take it away.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I wrote to all the council members. I hope you received my note. And the issue that I keep bringing up is, uh, safe distance and construction. We have the project next door to us and the two houses are 15 feet apart. And, uh, our, our house is seven feet from the property line. There is really no way when they're working there that we can maintain a safe distance. So I've asked that the town, uh, the possibility of the town set a limit that workers have to be six feet from the property line, no closer than six, six feet from the property line. What we've had is, you know, they've been roofing next door to us. It's impossible for them to keep the roofing material right here. It falls onto our property, falls into our kitchen stove, basically to our patio. We basically can't use the space between us. We've had to move our garbage cans out of the way.
Okay, thank you, Miguel. Thank you very much.
Do I have to?
It's, that was your two minute warning. That was your two minutes.
I didn't speak for two minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, Matt. You, Matt was.
Matt is the one who gives you the, okay.
Matt, so thank you very much for your comment. Mr. Town Attorney, can you please respond to the resident?
Sure. I, I did see Mr. Tableau's email today suggesting that the council impose a six foot requirement with respect to construction. I didn't have a lot of time to review it today, but my initial thoughts are if the town wanted to impose that limit, that would require an ordinance by the council. And then we'd need to confirm that the town has the authority to do that. And as you all know, under the Dillon Rule, a municipal government has only that authority. Generally that's given to it by the state. So we need to confirm whether the state has given us that authority. There is in the Maryland Code, a public safety article that allows in a state of emergency, an emergency plan to be adopted by the local government. But, you know, there too, we would need an emergency plan enacted by the council in order to enforce. Given that the federal government and the state government have declared that residential construction is an essential activity for our infrastructure, we'd also have to consider whether, you know, we have the, the local expertise to impose a requirement that hasn't been imposed yet by the federal or state governments. And then even if we had that local expertise to make that decision, do we have the ability to enforce it? Because if we did adopt that requirement, it would have to be enforced. And, you know, that raises, you know, questions and, and concerns as well. So that is my initial response, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Miguel, I, as I said to you in my email today, I, I really wish that we could find a way to do this. And every week we're on, Matt and I are on phone calls with the county government and the state and the governor and the county executive. So we will, we will raise that this week and find out because I'm sure other communities have gotten other resident, have had residents get the. other communities have gotten other resident, have had residents get the same request. So we'll get back to you on that. And I thank you for bringing it up.
So the next person I have is Robin Barr. Robin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I've got no comments to make at this time.
Okay, thank you. So next is, says George Wyeth, but it doesn't look like George. So Julie, I'm, I'm having some trouble unmuting you, so I don't know if you're, there you go.
Okay. Julie Greenberg, Fallstone Avenue. George has allowed me to use his DMX. And I'm just on this call or this meeting because I wanted to make sure that the town was aware, the town council was aware of the strong sentiment supporting a May agenda item of a study group on the building code. So by my count, and I think this is pretty good, there were 14 postings on the Somerset list serve, eight on the town list serve, 14 to the mayor, three on the council. And the sort of bottom line on the study group idea was 31 supporting, three with a moratorium until there is a study group, four supporting with a delay, and three opposed. So I think there's a very strong feeling that a very fact-based, methodical, transparent process of examining certain issues in the, in the building code relating to stormwater and trees is in the town's community interest. And for those that would advocate a delay, I would say that I think there might be some way to delay something for a bit so that people with children aren't as burdened by their homes, you know, their home responsibilities to teach. But in my eyes, this study has been delayed five years with regard to stormwater. It has been five years since the town council could have been, made itself aware of the fact that the town, that the county was providing to it approved building plans with a waiver of stormwater retention in every single plan. So I think we have delayed, and now's the time to act. And I think we can act in a way that is not divisive. I think divisiveness comes when you don't have fact-based inquiry. So I put before the council a very strong request that you put this on.
Julie, your time is up. Thank you very much. First, I want to say thank you for providing us with all that incredible research on the stormwater management cases in, in the town over the last, what was it, the last 20 cases maybe, because I think that will be very useful for the eventual study group that, that I'm confident that I'll be able to come up with a proposal for a study group by next month. I don't know if you were on the work session, but we didn't really have enough time to, to, you probably heard, but, but I'm confident that I'm going to be able to come up with an idea that will be acceptable to everyone to get, so that we can find a way to find objective, to get objective information on stormwater management and the tree canopy. So stay tuned, because I'm working very hard on it.
Thank you. Somebody suggested to me, some people might, you can hide your video if, if you're not speaking or if you step away or, or for whatever reason. So just know that that option is available to you. Moving on.
Hi.
The next person. Oh, sure. Who is, with phone number ending in 6338? Who is this?
It's Carrie Warford, but I didn't realize there was a queue. I'll just wait.
Okay, all right. We'll be right with you, Carrie. Thanks. The next person I have is Barbara Marinus.
Hi.
Hi, Barbara. Did you have any comments?
No, not on this. No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Matt Zaff.
Hello, no comments at this time, but thank you.
I have somebody just named Jack.
Hello, this is Jack Frink, Cumberland. Just a quick thank you to council, mayor, and Matthew and the staff for holding things together. Thanks, bye.
Thanks, Jack. All right, next person, Paige Whitley. Hi, Paige, did you have any comments?
I just wanted to say that I agreed with Julie that frankly, data is good and it only can inform us to make wise decisions in the future. So since building is going on, home sales while slow are still being sold and everything. I think continuing on to try to get the task force to gather data is a wise idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, don't forget, we, and for everybody who's listening, don't forget when you, before you speak, say your name and your street.
Okay, yes. Next up, there's James Berry.
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, go ahead.
Hi, Carrie Warford. I think I've, thank you so much for all of you, to all of your work keeping the town running and keeping us all safe. And I was just going to say that I do think it's really smart to gather information on the stormwater runoff and also what other regions have done on maintenance innovation, because now's a great time to gather information. That's it.
Great, thank you. Next, Ann Bolton.
Yes, hi, Ann Bolton, Cumberland Avenue. I don't really have anything to add to the several emails that I've sent you all. I just support data gathering, inclusivity, gathering as much input from the residents about the questions that we're trying to answer, and relying as much on expertise as data and residential input. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you. We have somebody with the phone number ending in 3500. Can you identify yourself and your street?
Miriam Cavins, Dorset Avenue.
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
Miriam Cavins, Dorset Avenue.
Great, thank you, Miriam. Did you have any public comments at this time?
I'm not sure where we are in the meeting. There are two issues I just wanted to, one, I, one issue I want to make a comment on and one I just wanted to learn more about.
Sure, this is the open period for public comments.
Ah, okay, then it's good I called in now. I wanted to comment on the shred event. Is this the right time to do so?
Well, it is on the agenda later, but you're, but if, if you're not going to be available, then you, you have two minutes now to talk.
The, this event's been going on for many years. Most of my immediate neighbors are being very careful with what they call literally their town currency and are saving it for the issues that they care most about. And so they're equally bothered by this very loud industrial equipment that ruins the better half of a Saturday every spring. I, I just feel like it's shred events, it's an advertising promo for a real estate company. The company has not been at all responsive to my requests or suggestions that they move it to other locations. It's just, these are normally held in big, like big store parking lots, big box store parking lots. It's not appropriate in a residential backyard. And so I don't know if there's another location in town that would get it a little further from the houses, but the noise level is really disturbing and the company that is getting advertising off this has been completely unresponsive. So my neighbors are equally concerned. They just literally want, don't want to speak up because they're more worried about traffic or certain other issues.
Okay, thank, thank you, Miriam. And the, the council will take those views into consideration later in the agenda. Is there anybody else, Matt?
Me, myself. The next person is Jan, Jan Kaufman. Jan, I'm having trouble unmuting you, so I'm going to skip over you for the moment. The next person is David Caithen. Hi, David.
Hey, how are you? Actually, not many comments. I support what Julie is saying, and I think the town council is doing a great job. The only thing I would note is that in recognition of the COVID-19 emergency we're in, you know, we may want to adopt a more lengthy study period just to allow for delays that maybe happen due to, you know, county staff not being able to get back to us as fast as we could.
Thank you, David.
Next, we have Lucinda Page. Hi, Lucinda, did you have any comments?
Let's see, is that me, Lucy Freeman?
I guess it is.
Yes, okay. Lucinda Page is my niece who lives in Berkeley, California. I don't know why it says Lucinda Page. Well, I have only, I have a comment. Barbara Condos just texted me, and she got bumped out. She was listening to the meeting and got bumped out. Can you put her back in again?
If you tell her to try to.
Just say, I got a text from her. I just called in by phone. She said, okay.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Lucy. The next person is, it just identifies you as KV. All right, I'm going to, oh, okay, great. That is Kumar. Thank you, Kumar. Ryan Smith. Hi, Brian, do you have any?
Thanks, yeah, this is Brian, and I was just calling in to support Julie's proposal and the data gathering, and also just to thank all of you for all the work you're doing. Other than that, no comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Next, Yogesh Rakosha. I apologize if I butchered your name, Yogesh. I believe Yogesh is here for, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just popped in for, for the other part of the meeting, so I, I'm quite not sure where we're at. Really don't mean to take up your time. Sorry about that.
All right, thanks. All right. And the last person I have here is person with the phone number ending in 0461. Can you hear us? All right, well.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, for bearing with us in this public comment period. Matt, one thing I want to ask you, so when we have hearings during each of these agenda items, we're not going to be able to run through everybody who's on the call. So who's on, who's on the Zoom? So how are we going to, perhaps they could, how do you suggest we do that?
Well, I could, I could unmute it and let us into the Wild West for a couple of minutes. The, the challenge is that some of the people are called in via phone. So maybe what we can do is ask those that if you are logged in on Zoom, you can raise, do the digitally raising your hand by going to the participant but, participant button down at the bottom, so I, so I can see that you have something. And then otherwise, I can, yeah, those are.
We're going to have to figure that, we're, we're going to have to figure that out. I think that if there is, because we can't be here all night, so perhaps as we go along, we'll figure out a way.
Maybe you could just ask the people who, can't you see from the participants' list which people are, are phone-only?
Yes.
So you could just ask those people by name, and then everybody else could just do the raising hands.
That's what I was thinking we could, we could try to do. There's, you know, a fairly large amount of people that are, that are dialed in. So I don't know how much of a time saver it would be, but a little bit, I guess.
Okay, well, let's proceed and see how it goes. So the first item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I, I moved it actually earlier, but I can second it.
You moved it, and Franny's second. Is there, is there discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? I think you're going to raise your hands, right?
That's fine.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing motion to consider recommendations from the Board of Supervisors of Elections and possible action on the town of Somerset election procedures. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Hi, Phyllis, are you, are you with us?
Me.
Yep.
Okay, so the Board of Supervisors of Elections has recommended that the town elections be postponed until a date in June, and June 9th might be a good date to give ample time for ballots to be mailed to registered voters in the town and for public health officials to deem that is safe for those ballots to be counted. Do you want me to keep on this list?
Just, just, why don't you just.
Summarize.
Summarize what your recommendations are.
Okay, so we want to postpone the elections to June. The petition process.
So you're, you're recommending June 9th?
Fine, but it's not carved in stone.
That's good.
Okay, the town charter allows for nominations by petition. This year it'll be April 22nd, so we wouldn't be able to do, I'm sorry, to April 21st. We couldn't do a ballot to April 22nd. To do that, we have also recommended, because of the difficulty in getting voter rolls, that anybody who's moved to the town since May 15th, 2019, fill out a Somerset voter registration card so we can update our voter rolls this year. And we recommend that the voter registration deadline this year be set for April 28th. And I just want to note that all the college kids who are home now are eligible to vote if they're registered and they reside 14 days prior to the election. So we could have an influx of new voters. Then this is where the council, one thing they have to think about is we're recommending mail-in ballots, because we can't have it at the town hall. And the question is.
But is the, but is the, but is the board recommending that? Because that's what, okay, thank you.
That was on the recommendation list.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if we want to go through this at, at this council meeting, but whether ballots are sent to every registered voter or just to voters who apply to vote, which is consistent with the absentee ballot procedure in some previous years. And then the question is, who's going to be in charge of mailing out the ballots? And another consideration, although I believe Ron will have to correct me, whether to hold a town forum or expand the town journal is not a town council decision. I believe it's a Board of Supervisors of Elections decision. Forums are the town tradition. They're not in the charter, assuming we have a contested election.
Is that it?
And if we did, right, yes.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the incredible work that you and your board has done this month under unprecedented times. Now, before I take questions from the council, I would like the town attorney to clarify, what are the decisions that the council is required to make tonight based on those recommendations? So if you could just enumerate them so we can clarify all this.
Sure, this is Ron Bolt. As you all know, the, the charter mandates that the election take place in May and mandates some other things that are potentially problematic. some other things that are potentially problematic during this pandemic, including that the ballots be counted 24 hours after the closing of the polls, which suggests you have to have physical polls open on Election Day. The governor has issued an executive order allowing municipal governments to amend their charters on an emergency basis to either postpone elections and/or amend the system of voting, including converting in-person balloting to balloting by mail. So what the council must decide tonight is whether to adopt, on an emergency basis, a charter amendment to provide some flexibility. I've drafted an amendment that would give us broad flexibility and, in fact, wouldn't have to decide all of the actual systems of voting tonight. This proposed charter amendment would just give the council the authority to adopt an emergency ordinance, adopting an emergency plan for the election. That emergency plan can be completed later, if need be, and can set forth all the procedures that we need to implement and any changes that we need to make to the strict framework of the charter, including that the election take place in May and that there be physical polling stations.
In June, you mean? In June.
In June, thank you. So again, yeah, the council needs to decide, are we going to postpone or amend the election procedures? And I think the answer to that is yes. We're either gonna do one or both. Most likely, the council does not want polling stations and frankly, that would probably violate the stay-at-home order. So we have to amend the charter. We've got a charter amendment before you. Under the governor's executive order, we can suspend the notice publication and referenda provisions of charter amendment law.
Okay, so, is that, so is that the only issue that needs to be voted on tonight?
That's right, yeah. The charter amendment should be adopted tonight. I've also given you the emergency ordinance that will follow the charter amendment, but that ordinance cannot be adopted until we have the actual election plan in place. So, you know, that should be done rather quickly. So you may, in addition to amending the charter tonight, also want to discuss, you know, whether you're gonna postpone the election, one, and two, whether you're moving to mail-in ballots. And assuming you are moving to mail-in ballots, should they be only given to those who request a ballot, like an absentee process? Or should all voters in the town receive a ballot?
Okay, so, I would, what I would like you to do is to enumerate, what are the items that need to be considered tonight based on the recommendations of the Board of Elections? So, for example, the Board of, the first thing would be, the Board of Elections recommended that the date be changed to June 9th. So that would be number one. So what are the, beyond that, what are the other things that would be need to be accomplished and passed tonight in order to accomplish the recommendations of the Board?
Could I jump in for a second? I think the charter allows that voters can register in person up to two weeks before the election. I think we have to come to terms with the registration date because of logistics of mailing out ballots, if you go that route.
Okay, so what's the Board's recommendation?
I think that we should have a registrate, the Board thinks we should have a registration deadline, April 28th. Allow five or six weeks to do this mail-in ballot process.
Okay. So again, Mr. Town Attorney and Madam Chair, if you could please enumerate the specific items that need to be considered so that the council can ask questions on those items. So the first one was, what I heard was the date. The second was the procedures that Phyllis just enumerated. What are the others?
The procedure, can I give you the fine items? I think you have to vote on, one, about the date, three, about the registration date, and then, the five, about the format of balloting this year.
And what's your specific recommendation on that?
We're throwing it to the council, whether, my understanding of the charter is the Board of Supervisors recommends the procedure for voting to the council. That would be for absentee ballots and the council has to approve. And we're looking for guidance, which is the better way to go.
Well, thank you. So because our town attorney has expertise in this area, because he's been helping to manage elections in other towns, what would your recommendation be, Mr. Town Attorney, on the issue that the Chair just brought up?
So on the question of whether ballots should be given on an absentee basis or sent to all voters, I can tell you the issues and discussions, the points that have been raised in other jurisdictions, the pros and cons specifically. So, the general consensus seems to be that an absentee ballot process is a little more secure because folks will have to request a ballot before they receive one, so there'll be greater control as to who gets a ballot. And some say the county voter registration list is out of date, some say woefully so, bringing up examples of, you know, folks that haven't lived in the town for five years, let's say, who are still on the county voter rolls. So if you were to send ballots to all registered voters, you'll probably send some number of ballots addressed to folks who no longer live in the town. However, there are security measures that you can implement in that regard as well. And what some towns are doing is requiring folks to sign the return envelope with their name and address and sign under affidavit that they're qualified to vote. So, those are the pros and cons of the absentee ballot process. The pros and cons of mailing a ballot to all voters are, obviously, there's a relaxation in the administrative burden. You won't have to process absentee ballot requests as they come in and, you know, not having staff have to work on that if, you know, the election Board of Supervisors can't because of social distancing. Some towns are having a third-party vendor send the ballots as well to relieve the administrative burden. What, you know, what are most towns doing? I think it's almost a split, really, from those that have sought my guidance.
Okay, well, why don't we go to a round of questions from the council? And I'll start with Council President Shaw.
Do you know anything about this firm that some towns are using? I'm a little worried about having our administrative staff try and handle the ballots during this coronavirus-challenging period.
Yeah, so the Town of Chevy Chase is using a company called Electech out of New Jersey. They are going to issue ballots to all voters on the county registration list and on the town's list of non-US citizen voters. They'll be mailing the official ballot and the official ballot envelope, and both must be used in order for the ballot to be eligible to be counted. And the ballots will actually be mailed back to Electech in New Jersey and Electech will actually count the ballots. There has been concern in some towns about, you know, what do you do with the ballots when they come back? And, you know, obviously, there's concerns about handling them. So, you know, using Electech resolves that issue. What some other towns are doing is, you know, extending the amount of time that it's going to be taken to actually count the ballots. For example, your charter requires the ballots to be counted within 24 hours. Well, if you decided to do this yourself, you may extend that in anticipation of, you know, leaving the ballot sit in a post office box or in a mailbox for at least three days, as some folks say, you know, the virus isn't gonna live on paper for more than three days. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I had one other question. Do you know how much they're charging the town of Chevy Chase?
I don't know exactly. I believe it was around $10,000.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zueg Hazner.
I wonder if you all might consider just adopting the charter amendment tonight and then having a special, allowing Matt and Linda to gather some additional information and also to conference with Phyllis and having another meeting maybe in eight days and to come up with a final plan, but just to adopt the charter amendment tonight. That's my only statement.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Yes, I have two questions. One of them is that I know that, I know because I registered for an absentee ballot for the Maryland elections, I know that there's an option for downloading ballots and printing them yourself. I didn't follow through to find out what happens to them after that, but I'm wondering, Ron, if there's anything comparable that you would recommend, where we, instead of having to either hire a company or ask our staff to mail out ballots, whether there's a possibility for us to have a ballot be downloaded somehow by our residents, at least by most of our residents?
Electech offers that service. Whether the town can do it itself, I have questions because that would require individual ballots to be issued, probably with control numbers, through each email. You know, if you just sent a standard ballot to one email without any sort of control number, then I think there would be possibility for fraud, you know, with mail-in or email balloting, you know, I think there has to be control numbers so you can have a handle on how many ballots are actually coming back and whether they're from qualified voters.
And my second question is, I guess, sort of similar, which is, is there any completely electronic option for doing this?
Yes, at one time, Martin's additions, and I don't believe they're considering it now, but was considering Election Buddy, which allows online voting. Voters would register with the third-party vendor on their website and be able to vote directly on the website.
Do you have any idea how much that would cost?
I do not.
I mean, do you think it'd be less than $10,000?
I imagine so, because it doesn't seem that there would be that much staff time associated with it if it's mostly automated.
Okay, is that your last question, councilmember?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm just, you know, usually we have a very small turnout and, you know, at least since I've been thinking about it, it's, you know, been an uncontested election, I just would want to make sure that everybody has a chance to vote. And I think when you limit sending ballots to people who ask for them, you know, you sort of miss out on the people who are kind of last minute about things, you know, people who might show up with, on short notice. And if you have only sent ballots out to people who have asked about them in ahead of time, then you've cut out a whole bunch of people. So I guess that's my last comment.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to the, to the next councilmember, I think what I would like to say is that, you know, in general, we discourage taking votes on things where expenses are involved that we don't know enough about and vendors. So I think the Council member Zueg Hazner's idea is a good one, that we obtain more, that we defer a decision about that, that the council defers the decision about that tonight and reconvenes as quickly as possible once we get that information, because to sit here and try to speculate and then try to vote, it's not really, you know, the best way to do it.
Just really quickly, I did just quickly look it up, and the Election Buddy is $89 for up to 1,000 voters.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paner, do you have any questions?
No, but I would echo your comments and Barbara's comments and opt and endorse that path.
Thank you. Councilmember Serko.
I was thinking the same as Morris and Barbara, that we should amend the town code so we have the flexibility we need and gives us a few more days or a week or so to figure out the details of these different options.
Okay, thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Can I just clarify? The voter registration list, historically, the Town of Somerset has maintained its own list because we have, non-US citizens can vote. The county registration list has, is a mess. There are people who have moved, people who don't longer are alive. They don't maintain it very well. So hopefully, we can use our own list.
Okay, thank you, but apparently, that's not something that's gonna be decided tonight.
No, but I just wanted to clarify what the list is.
Thank you. So, is the, before I go to public comments, is there, and this is also to Ron, so for tonight, if a decision is gonna be deferred about the, how we're gonna conduct the election, is the only decision that needs to be made tonight, is that, is the charter change and setting the date of the election? Is that right, Mr. Town Attorney?
That's right. I might recommend that the council at least decide whether the election is gonna be continued, because if it's not gonna be continued, you know, I think the Board of Supervisors will need to act pretty quickly.
No, that's what I, yeah, that's what I, I'm sorry if I wasn't, if you didn't hear me, but I said that it would be the, setting the date tonight and then deferring the other decisions to a meeting in about a week or so.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
I'm just gonna go ahead and unmute, give people the opportunity.
Hi, it's Carrie Warford, Essex Avenue. One quick question is, I wanted to nominate my incredibly talented and amazing neighbor.
It doesn't affect nominations. This doesn't affect nominations.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what's happening.
I'm gonna go ahead and-
The nominations tonight, this has nothing to do with nominations. Does anyone else have a comment or question?
I'm gonna unmute people.
Does anyone else have a comment or question?
I have a question.
Tell us your name and your street. Thank you.
James Berry, Essex Avenue. Item 10 from the recommendations was that there would not be an election- Item 10 from the recommendations was that there would not be an election if it was uncontested.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm not seeing any other.
Okay, thank you. So council, is there a councilor prepared to make a motion?
I move that.
Go ahead, Mar.
I move that we adopt the Declaration of a State of Emergency and ordinance to activate an emergency plan for the town election as drafted by our town attorney.
Second that motion.
Hold on a second. Are you also putting the, you're putting the date, right?
There's no date in this. I think that has to be a separate motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Mr. Town Attorney, is that the motion you needed?
I might have accidentally muted Ron, sorry. There you go, Ron.
Mr. Town Attorney, is that, is that okay?
No, that's the ordinance which we will defer. We need to adopt tonight Charter Amendment Resolution Number 1.
Sorry.
Okay, well, that failed for lack of a second because I didn't hear a second. Okay, so.
I'll try again. Okay, a resolution to add a new section 8335 to the Charter of the town of Somerset. I'm moving that we adopt this as drafted by our town attorney.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay, and I heard a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Are there any further motions?
We need a motion to adopt a date for the election, correct?
Yes.
So I move that we adopt as recommended by the Board of Elections, June 9.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those opposed. Okay, thank you very much. I want to compliment everyone for handling that beautifully and I want to again thank our Board of Elections. Jim Berry is a member of the board, I want to make sure everybody knows that, and Phyllis for doing an incredible job and we will reconvene on this topic as soon as possible. The next item is nominations for two seats on the town council and one seat for town mayor for the June 9, 2020 town election. And I will now turn this over to our distinguished chair of the Board of Elections. Phyllis, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry, Phyllis.
Okay, I just wanted to welcome everybody to our first-ever virtual nomination process for the 2020 town elections. As Mayor Slaven said, this year, the mayor and two council seats are up for election. Currently, Jeffrey Slaven is the mayor and Morris Paner and Steve Serko hold the council seats that are up for election. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for mayor. Do I hear a nomination for mayor?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm muted. Have I been muted? Okay. It's my honor to nominate Jeffrey Slaven for mayor. I don't have a long speech drafted, I just want to say that the town continues to benefit from his leadership and experience and I'm happy to nominate him for mayor tonight.
Is there a second? Okay, are there any other nominations for mayor? Okay, we'll move on to the council seats. Do I hear any nominations for town council?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Morris Paner, if you could please. Morris and his wife Nancy and their four children are active participants in Somerset and know firsthand that this is a very special community. Morris is fully aware of how important it is, even during these incredibly difficult times, to maintain our wonderful town and its reputation as a well-tempered community. Financially, Morris is conservative and frugal and that will be exceedingly important in the coming year. Over the last, I'm working through a variety of issues that have come before the council. I am delighted that Morris is willing to serve another term and please to nominate Morris Paner for council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations for town council? Mar.
I'd like to nominate Steve Serko for the town council. Steve has been a new these last two years and he's really worked hard to learn how town councils operate. He's participated in MML to learn more about things. He's been an active member of the, an active liaison to the town's environment committee and he's represented the town with the Coordinating Committee on Friendship Heights to better get to understand the issues of nearby communities. He lives just down the street from me and is a good neighbor.
Do I hear a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations for town council?
Hi, this is Carrie Warford, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'd like to nominate my neighbor, Robin Barr, on Essex Avenue. He's a resident of Somerset of many decades. He's the chair of our environment committee of many years. He's very thoughtful and a great bridge builder and consensus builder and he has just finished many years as a senior researcher at NIH and now he's retiring and has time to dedicate to the town and I'm thrilled that he's willing to dedicate his time to the town and I'd like to nominate him for council.
Is there a second?
I don't think so. You can second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for town council?
Jack, are you there?
Yes, I was going to second the nomination for Mr. Barr, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is any other nominations out there? Okay, if you would like to run for mayor or town council and did not throw your hat in the ring this evening, you still may be nominated by petition. The petition must be signed by at least 20 registered voters and submitted to the town manager no later than 4:00 p.m. on April 21st. We will get back to everybody about the logistics for the election. We have recommended that notice will be given to town residents by various means. The Town Journal, maybe a special postcard, an email blast on the official listserv and on the voluntary listserv.
I just wanted to, I missed that Matt Daft had raised his hand. I apologize, Matt.
That's, can you hear me?
Yep.
So my question was for the petition, the, you know, that we have, we can nominate someone via petition, but we require 20 signatures. Can this be electronic signatures, given the current situation? And is it 20 days prior to April 28th? Is it 20 days prior to the actual election date or is it 20 days starting now?
We decided to keep the same date that was publicized because of the logistics this year, even with moving the election date. We have to have enough time to get the ballots out, so that's why that was left that way. And in terms of doing the petition, I couldn't find anything in the historical records on elections, but we will send out a recommendation on how to do the petition this year.
Okay, well, thank you, Matt, and we will have the town attorney work with Phyllis to get a definitive answer for you. Thank you so much and thank you again, Madam Chair, for the outstanding work. The next item, Public Hearing Motion to Consider Approval of an Extension to the Building Construction Project at 5800 Deal Place. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I am going to turn it over quickly to our town building administrator and, so Doug, feel free to take it away.
Yes, good evening, this is Doug Lohmeyer, the town engineering consultant. The current building permit will expire on April 3, last Friday. On March 10, the contractor submitted a request to extend the building permit for four months with a list of items not completed as of that date and an extension check. The homeowner has requested an extension of six months for the building permit and after reviewing the work that remains to be done, the time needed for the county to sign off on the plan, I recommend that the council extend the building permit for six months.
We also have the homeowner here. Yogesh, if you are listening, I have, let's see, I believe, there we go. Okay, I was able to unmute you, so I don't know if you have anything to add as well.
Yeah, I don't know really what else to say. There are some pretty unfortunate, extenuating circumstances that I cannot speak completely about at the moment, but this has been a, probably one of the worst things that we've had to go through and none of this is the way we wanted it to be. So given those extenuating circumstances and my desire to get into that house in a way that's going to be as least disturbing to the town and as quick as possible, I need the six months.
Okay, Yogesh, thank you very much for attending tonight and I do want you to know that a lot of additional information has been provided to state your case to the council, just so you know. It's all been made available to them, so thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No, well, I just want to say thank you very much for coming to the meeting and presenting your case and I wish you the very best success in having this project completed in the next six months.
Thank you. Councilmember Zueg Hauser.
Ditto for me and no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions, I hope it goes smoothly from here.
Councilmember Paner.
Same, no questions.
Councilmember Serko.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
I'm going to unmute it.
Okay, who's first?
I think it's nobody, I'm going to mute everybody.
Thank you. So since there are no other comments or questions from our residents or guests, are you prepared to make a motion, council?
I can make a motion to approve the six-month extension to the building permit for 5800 Deal Place as recommended by Doug Lohmeyer.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, the next item is the approval of the rear addition at 4720 Cumberland Avenue. So let me start. Today is April 6, 2020. This is a hearing before the town of Somerset Council for Permit Application Number 200406B to Consider Proposed Construction of Rear Edition and a Redesigned Deck and Patio. In the event that a transcript of this hearing is required, this hearing is being audio-recorded. Because of time and technical constraints, we are asking that residents be limited to one comment each and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. The town manager will call on residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Second, the applicant will present their application. Third, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. Four, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss amongst themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of 30 days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and report.
Let's see, there we go, I've unmuted you, Doug.
The applicant has submitted a demolition permit to remove a portion of the existing deck and to construct a new, smaller deck in its place at the rear of the house. The application also included enclosing in the screen porch under the nine-foot-by-11-foot deck that will remain. The proposed building coverage will be approximately 25%, which does not exceed the maximum allowed by the code. The existing deck was built during the 1980s. HPC approved the applicant's plan on December 4, 2019. Montgomery County approved the plan on March 10 of this year. The new deck exceeds all the minimum setbacks and requirements for the town code. The applicant also submitted a boundary survey and a parking plan with the application. There's one tree that may be impacted at the right rear of the house and I hope Tolbert will be able to comment on that and I recommend the council approve the applicant's demolition and building permit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lohmeyer. Now will the applicant?
I don't know if you wanted Tolbert to give his.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Dr. Feather.
Thank you.
For being here.
Good to see you. Good to see everybody. I looked over, there is a tree protection plan, I think you all have a copy, protecting the street trees and two-side trees and I think the, all the other, all the other trees I think are going to be okay on this, so that's the only tree protection I had.
Okay, thank you. Will the applicant identify themselves, him or herself, and make a presentation?
Hi, Mike, I just unmuted you.
Yeah, hey, this is Mike Sullivan from DeMarne Day, we're the general contractor on the job. I don't know if it would be that you'd want to speak to me or Phil Eagleberger, who is the architect, who's also on the phone, I believe.
Okay, I got Phil here as well, I'll unmute you, Phil, as well.
All right, I don't have a lot to add. I think it's pretty clear, we're making a smaller footprint and enclosing some existing space and it's not really, we're not really expanding it, we're just moving a stair into that existing screen porch area so that it becomes kind of a mudroom to give access to the basement and to the upper, to the first floor level. And that's it, really. I'm happy to answer questions, but I don't want to slow the process down.
Okay, thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'm glad to see the footprint isn't expanding. I just want to be sure, Doug said a tree could have been affected, but Dr. Feather, you're saying all the trees can be protected on this property and they'll be just fine? saying all the trees can be protected on this property and they'll be just fine?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Zuyghauser.
Sorry, I had you muted.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Serco.
I just have one question about the chimney. It seems to stick up in a very observable way. Is that related to, or is that a completely separate sort of renovation that's happening at the same time?
That is a new chimney that is at the rear of the house, and it comes up in an area that was built in the 1970s, I believe. And we'll certainly ratchet that down as far as we can. It's a chimney for a wood-burning fireplace.
I assume since the historic commission approved it, it's okay. I just noticed that it seemed very visible in the drawings.
Yeah, the hop was okay, yes.
Is that your question?
Yeah, that was it. I was just hoping to get a little bit more information.
Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. We ask that those making public comments be respectful of the council's time and keep all testimony and evidence relevant to the application in hand and not be repetitive. And we are asking residents to limit one comment each, up to two minutes. Are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
I talked to Lancy. Well, he was hiking with somebody.
So then, I assume that the applicant doesn't have any rebuttal testimony, and so we will therefore conclude the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed, and I will ask if a council member is prepared to make a motion.
Hi, Marty. I move that we approve the rear addition to the property located at 4721 Cumberland Avenue, as specified with, in the plans and by the reports of our building permit administrator and our arborist.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. This concludes the public hearing. Thank you. The next item is to approve removals of the following public trees, as recommended by the town arborist. And they're all listed on the agenda. Ms. Dr. Feather.
The two of these have Trent Court addresses, but they're all on fall stone. They're all older flowering cherry trees, and most of them have large deadwood and are ready to come out, and we're gonna replace these this spring. The Park and Natural Resources Committee has already looked at the tree list, and we're gonna have you all approve that in the May council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Councilmember Zuyghauser.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Yeah, 50% are asymptomatic, yes.
Okay, hearing none. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I move that we approve the removals of the trees that Dr. Feather has recommended tonight.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Next, are we getting an update on the town hall construction project?
Yeah, I can just give, I'll be very brief with it. Essentially, we're finished with all construction. We're just, we have, I think, a total of four inspections that still need to happen, one of which is happening tomorrow, one on Thursday. I think the only one that is a little bit up in the air is actually the final one, the building and occupancy inspection, because at this time, Montgomery County, who would need to sign off on it, is only doing outdoor inspections, so they may not actually come into our town hall to sign off on it. So we're kind of in wait-and-see mode on that. In terms of finances, we still have our final requisition bill with DeMarne and Day, which is a little over $60,000 that we have to pay. And then we are anticipating getting back the $52,000 that we spent for the bond for the new sprinkler installation. So all told, it should be another $15,000 or so to the bottom line.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilmember Zuyghauser.
No.
Councilmember Panner.
I think Franny's next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peel, I'm sorry.
No questions.
Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Come walk by the town hall sometime when you're getting exercise. It's looking really good. The next item, public hearing motion to approve contract with Wet Yet Fitness to provide water aerobics at the town pool. Mr. Town Manager.
Sure, so hopefully you see the contract. It is a slight increase from last year. I think we paid $80 per class. This year, she upped her rate to 85, but I've been in contact with her. I think that it makes sense to lock her in now. We're not paying anything upfront, but just agreeing to terms. And if the pool opens late, or we miss classes, or whatever it might be, we're not on the hook for anything, but we are sort of calling dibs on her, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No, as long as we're able to get out of these contracts that deal with the swimming pool, I'm just fine going ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuyghauser.
Yeah, that is my concern as well, and I didn't read the contract carefully, but if the pool does not...
She only, I can answer that, because I was on the meeting. She only charges if she works, and we wanna make sure that she doesn't go somewhere else so that she can be locked in, so that she doesn't lose her job.
If the pool doesn't open at all...
There's no, there's no consequences.
Okay, great, thank you.
Penalty, thank you. Because we had, by the way, everyone, the management committee for the pool, which is the mayor, the liaison to the committee, the outstanding committee chair, and our town manager, we've already met to start preparing for what could happen this summer, and that was an item that we all decided to be voted on tonight. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just have a question about, and I know that you have more information coming to us later, but will the decision about opening the pool be a Town of Somerset decision, or is that a county decision?
We'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
We'll get back to you on that. Is that your only question? Thank you. Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions. It sounds like a good arrangement.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Hearing none. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the contract with Wet Yet Fitness to provide water aerobics at the town pool at a cost of $85 a class.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is to approve alarm monitoring, video monitoring, and maintenance contract with Skyline Technologies in the amount of $7,615.50. Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, so this one is a little bit, a little bit less straightforward, I guess. I would still recommend that we approve this contract. I've been in communications with the Skyline folks, and basically, if the pool opening is delayed and we do not wish to do the alarm monitoring, which may be two separate questions, then we will renegotiate our contract based on the amount of time that they are, that they are actually providing the alarm monitoring. The what they, the total that we have in front of us is essentially the maximum that we would pay based on our planned opening of the weekend before Memorial Day to the last weekend of September. But as I said, if our pool is not open and we don't want the alarm monitoring, then we will not owe our regular bills with them. These are paid in installments. And so that's the first part of it. The maintenance contract, I was actually recommended by them to hold off on that for now. So I would, I would recommend, actually, that the council only approve the video monitoring contract. So the long and short of it is that we actually have kind of older equipment that the maintenance contract went up fairly significantly this year, from 1,500 to a little over 2,000. And so I was going to have further talks with them about what it would cost and what their recommendations were for getting new equipment, because if we were to buy new equipment, then we would get one-year, a one-year warranty on the new equipment, and so we would save on the cost of the maintenance plan. So my recommendation was to kind of hold off on that for now. I'll get some more information, and we can still revisit it in May before the pool would open.
And this is also an item that was recommended to be left on the agenda by the management team of the pool. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Just one. So Matt, what would be the maximum amount you'd want to approve tonight?
Yeah, sure, let me do a look. So if we just, if you do the video monitoring, that is $6,080.
Does that include the alarm monitoring too, or no?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's all the video and alarm monitoring.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyghauser.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
I don't know. Well, Matt's not here anymore. I didn't know if he wanted to add anything to it.
Hearing none. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve an alarm monitoring and a video monitoring contract with Skyline Technologies in the amount of $6,080.
Actually, I have a...
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, I have a question. I'm sorry. Do we have dates for that?
Yes. That would, that would get us, that's basically, shoot, I just, there with me. Let me repull it, pull it back up, just to make sure I have this right.
Can we put the dates in the motion?
That is, it's May 15 through October 1st.
But it's two contracts, actually, because it's two fiscal years.
Right.
So would you like to restate your motion? Madam Council President, do you want to restate your motion?
I heard you ask the question. I'm not sure how I would exactly restate the motion.
Mr. Town Attorney, can you give some advice to the council president?
Well, I didn't see a, what, could you explain your concern, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Council President, why don't you pose your question?
I think the question, Ron, was whether the dates need to be in the motion to accept the contract.
It's also that it's actually, if you look at the paperwork, it's two contracts. It's one that goes from the middle of May until June 30, and then there's a second contract that goes from July 1 until the end of September. I can't split the numbers up, the dollar figure up between them. I guess I can...
Do we want to, since we're gonna have another meeting for the election contract, do we want to obtain more information from the vendor?
Why can't we do both tonight? What's the...
Well...
If you wanted me to amend the motion, I guess what I could do is say...
You don't need to amend, you can, nobody seconded, so you can restate.
Yeah, go ahead and say it again.
All right, so I move that we approve an alarm monitoring and video monitoring contract with Skyline Technologies in the amount of $6,080, covering the time period from the middle of May until the end of September.
Second.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item, to approve contract with Member Splash for town pool sign-in and member software in the amount of $5,000. Mr. Town Manager.
Let me unmute a couple of folks to see if the Member Splash people are here. I have somebody with the phone number ending in 3500. Okay, I'm guessing that's a no. And phone number ending in 0461. Okay, well, so I guess we are sort of at the same place that ended up happening last year, unfortunately. So members, so a couple of, a couple of things happened. The pool committee met with the pool management company, who recommended a local company to overhaul our pool membership. And so I had some discussions with that person. Unfortunately, the capabilities of the system that he's built, and he just has kind of a one-size-fits-all system, is not conducive with the way that we do membership and payments for our pool. The way that he described his system is more if every resident gets membership to the pool and then gets 10 guest passes. And so he can issue new guest passes to you, but that's really the only additional thing. So he would have had a better system, perhaps, for maintaining records of residents and making sure that we have people in the right addresses and pulling up their picture and a better badge system. But in terms of tracking and really inputting what the costs would be for the different classes and guest passes and things, I just didn't think that that system really worked. So then I went back to the Member Splash people, who essentially gave the same proposal as last year, and theirs is a little bit more of a robust system that allows customizable payment packages for different tiers or different levels of the different classes and things that we charge our people for. They did have somebody hired from a local pool in the Glen Echo area, now I can't remember what pool it was, that actually got hired to their national team that they said would help us out. And then I just learned last week that that person is no longer with them. So I was hoping that the person that's... So I was hoping that the person that stepped in their place would be here tonight, but unfortunately, he's not. So I can try to answer any questions that you might have. I guess I would just say that the system that we do have in place has been wrought with issues over, I know this past summer, but my understanding is that it's, it's been going on for a little while. And especially considering the probability, I would say that the pool is going to open later. I think we have plenty of time to get the system right, make sure that it's set up in place. And I think it will, I think it will be, it will ease the burden on the town staff and, and even the pool staff to have a clearer pool entry system that is specifically designed for pools. Whereas ours right now is really more of a, it's really set up more for gyms, to be honest.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I wouldn't say a question. Matt and I had talked a little bit about making sure we had somebody from Member Splash tonight, just because last year we, we weren't really able to answer some of the questions council members had. But I do think Matt has made a good presentation tonight to give you an idea of why this might be a good move for us. And in addition, since when we get to the budget, we'll be talking about delaying, doing an update of our website where people had said, let's have a, a way you can handle money on the website. This system, Member Splash, can't actually handle money. So I think that it, it, it could be an improvement for the management of our pool.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoe Cazzer, do you have any questions?
My only, my concern, and maybe Matt or Marnie can alleviate this concern, is that, so this is two years in a row where they said they're going to show up and they haven't shown up. And I know, Matt, you mentioned that this is going to alleviate some of the work for the staff. But if they're so hard to reach, and quite frankly, it seems difficult to work with, are we prepared, during this time now with everything that's going on in the world, are you prepared to take this on? Even, even though our old system is broken and does not work well, are you prepared to start a new adventure with a company that can't even seem to show up to a meeting?
I think that's a very valid question. And given that they didn't show up tonight, I, I share that concern. I do think that Mar- Marnie raised a good point, that I think one of the benefits of it is that it, it, it's a better forward-facing system for residents as well to be able to monitor and check their own account balances. I'll say that the system that we did have, I, I didn't find their customer service to be all that great either. But to your point, it, it's not an overhaul of the system and still sort of a wing and a, you know, a wing and a parry.
I have one other question.
Okay, but before you go forward, I would like to say that I, I think, given the fact that this, as Councilor Zoe Cazzer, Zoe Cazzer points out, that the company isn't here, and given the fact that we don't really like to vote on new contracts without having input or the ability to cross-examine the vendor, I think it's fine to run through the questions now. But I think it would be better if we scheduled a meeting when, at the convenience of that vendor. Because, because it, it, it's not, we can't make a good decision without talking to the vendor. And, and I, it, it's not worth wasting. We all know that we want to, to improve it there. But, but I would be uncon- even though the, the pool management team recommends this, I, I, I'm, I'm, I can't really recommend that we do it tonight without, given the history. So let's run through the questions and, and the Chair of the Committee can make a comment. But I will, we will, Matt and I will commit to getting a meeting, a, a meeting with this vendor before a decision. In line, do I have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. If, Matt, do you know who does most of the work to bring in the new system? Is it the vendor or is it our, our office?
We, them. We would be responsible essentially for getting the data from our current system over to them. And then they, they would be then inputting all of that into their system and, and sort of taking it from there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Peel, do you have any questions?
I just want to point out that Linda wants to say something.
Well, she'll get a chance. Do you have any other questions?
Well, my question was, my question was really just for what Marnie was saying about being able to handle money. And I just wanted, eventually I want to find out whether that means that people can use their phones. But that can wait, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Panner, do you have any questions?
My questions can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Serko.
Yeah, I'm just curious where the pool committee stands on this. I really look to the committees to-
I think Matt's going to talk in a minute. Matt, Chairman.
Oh, great.
Okay, thank you. So now I would like to call on the Chair for his input.
Am I up?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Couple things. Number one, Member Splash was actually the original recommendation from the pool committee last year. And, and then what happened was when we had our end-of-season meeting with American Pools, we asked them for additional names just because we didn't want it to be a like zero bid type situation. And that was where the other company came out. So I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone knows that even though we did pursue things with this other company initially earlier this year, last year and as well as this year, we, you know, we were 100% in favor of Member Splash from the beginning. And the committee previously had done a bunch of surveying of other pools that American Pools had recommended. And everyone that had Member Splash was very happy with it. I would make one quick suggestion, and this is more logistic than anything else, and maybe unmute all the called-in lines just to make sure someone from Member Splash-
We will do that. We will, we will do that after, after you speak.
I think Linda's going to speak to that, actually.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, questions, but, you know, we do think it's highly necessary.
Thank you. So Matt, do you want to ask, unmute Linda and see what she has to say?
No, I was just going to say, I just happened to check emails, and it looks like, I guess, the guy who Matt's been talking to Paul, is that his name?
Yes.
He sent a message in, he apologized, but apparently he said he's working from home, and they had an extended internet outage here, maybe related or not, and some flash flooding that they're having there in Oceanside, California. But he said he would like to talk to you more about continuing this discussion and hopefully, hopefully finding a way to get with the Somerset Town Council soon. And this was sent at about 8:27 this evening.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Linda. So we will, so to the council, we will work with them to schedule a meeting to make sure, because, because I, I don't think it's a good idea to take a vote tonight without having the opportunity to talk to the vendor. But thank you, everybody, for all your hard work on this. The next item, to approve parts replacement at the town pool as recommended by American Pool, totaling $3,911.48, Mr. Town Manager. And then the Chair also can also, before I take questions.
I, I think it's fairly straightforward, so I'm, I'm just going to turn it over. If you have any questions, I'm happy to-
Let's, let's see what the Chair wants to say.
Just very simply.
He's a member of the manager.
You know, we highly recommend you approve these, you know, obviously, we all want the pool to open. But even if the pool, for whatever reason, can't be open, these are things that need to be done. And, you know, we just, and need to be done now, basically.
Thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilor Zoe Cazzer.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilmember Panner.
No questions.
Councilmember Serko.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'm, I move that we approve the parts replacement at the town pool as recommended by American Pool, totaling $3,911.48. Are we doing both of these at once?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. I didn't announce the other one, so I'm sorry for that. The next item is a public hearing motion to approve town pool maintenance work totaling 3,552.25 cents as recommended by American Pool and required by the Maryland Department of Health. Mr. Town Manager, do you want to?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. And Matt, do you have any, Matt, Chairman Zaff, do you have anything to add on that?
Nope, just did answer what I said the last time.
Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Zoe Cazzer.
No.
Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilor Panner.
No questions.
Councilmember Serko.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I approve, I, I move that we approve the maintenance work by, at the town pool as recommended by American Pool and required by the Maryland Department of Health in the total number of $3,552.25.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve agreement to one-year extension of waste and recycling contract with Good Companies Incorporated in an amount of $137,409. Mr. Town Manager.
So I wrote just a short memo on my recommendation. Essentially, we have the ability with our contract with Good to extend it for an option year at the same price that we're paying right now, same service. This kind of goes hand in hand with what we will discuss with the budget. But my recommendation is that the town's goal will be to provide the same level of service that we can within the parameters and restrictions that will ultimately come out of whatever economic hardships arise because of the, the coronavirus outbreak. And so I also just think that, given the uncertainty in people's lives, it, it just may not be the best time to disrupt regular service like trash and recycling and to have people try to learn a whole new way of doing that. This doesn't mean that we have to sign a new multi-year contract. I know this is something that's been on the environmental committee's agenda for, for a while now, and they've done a lot of research. And Robin helped draft a, a request for, for bids to include dual-stream recycling. My recommendation would just be that we, we reevaluate that over the next year and, and come back to it next year. So.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to say thank you to Matt for, for steering us in this direction. I am disappointed we can't consider right now during the dual, the changing how we are handling our, our refuse. But there's just too much going on not to just go ahead with our current arrangements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoe Cazzer.
Yeah, I also want to thank Matt very much for his thoughtful recommendation that I truly feel at this point in time is in the very best interest of the residents of our town.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
Just want to agree with everybody, but also just to point out that I'm glad that we're looking at ways to save money right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Panner.
I agree with everything.
Thank you. Councilmember Serko.
No comments, no further comments.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? You want to open it up for one second?
Yeah, I, I know that, sorry. Robin, I'll just let you unmute yourself.
Right, I just did that. I, I'm not going to change things by saying what I'm saying, but this is a comment that, you know, what Marnie's referring to is that the status of recycling has changed drastically in the last three years. The markets for recycling have collapsed in certain areas of recycling. And we really do have to rethink how we're handling our recycling because of that. A year's delay means we're sending more stuff to the landfill than we might otherwise be doing. I accept under the current circumstances that's what it's going to have to mean, but we've really got to look at this closely over the next year. And that's all I'm saying. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there further comments or questions? Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve an, an agreement to a one-year extension of waste and recycling contract with the Good Company in an amount of $137,409.
I, I have one-
Is there a second?
Well, I have one question again about the date. What's the end date for this contract?
It would, it run, it would pick up starting June. So it would run through, or, yes, it'd pick up, starts June first and then run a year.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let me remind you that if you, when a motion is made, if you have a question, you can ask it after the session, after the second. Thank you. The next item is the introduction of the FY 2021 budget. Let me give you all an update. So as you recall, we had our two work sessions where we went over the, the proposed, a proposed budget line by line. And we, the council members gave input on all of the items that they wanted to add to the budget. And, and our, our draft was, was loaded with items that were supported by a majority of, of the count, of each item was supported by a majority of the council. And then, of course, the world has changed. And we had planned, I had planned to have a, what I call a budget reconciliation meeting with the Council President, the Chair of the Budget Committee, and me to sift through all of the recommendations and, and come up with a balanced budget. Then, of course, the, we had the pandemic. And so when we had that meeting, we actually went through. And tonight, I'm going to be presenting a total bare bones budget to continue all the services that we're required to give, but not adding any new initiatives. And, and, and it has been pointed out, I want, and I want to thank Phil Young and Marnie and Matt for, you know, their extraordinary efforts in this regard. I, I do want to point out that the rev, the, the revenues that we're going to be getting for, for this year are going to be based on what people, since most of our, the bulk of our income comes from income tax. The, the, the funds are going to be based on incomes from 2019. So what we are doing in this budget is preparing for what might happen in, you know, next year. And the other thing is, if the revenues, so that not, so that people that had ideas about some new initiatives such as the recycling, so if it turns out during the year that we do have unanticipated funds that we could put, you know, in new initiatives, we still have the ability to, to do that during the course of the year. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt. And, and after that, this isn't really intended to be a discussion because what, as you all know, the process is that the budget is published and it, in the, in all of our communication devices. And then throughout the month, there is discussion and comment, and then- and then we have a hearing before it's voted on next month. So for tonight, there isn't a need to have a great deal of discussion, really. I will go around to take some, some questions or brief comments, but there's no reason to prolong it. But I will also turn this over to Matt to make his comments.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. As the mayor said, we, it's hard to know right now what, what the ultimate result of this will mean financially. There's been some talk that even this year, the state may cut back on highway user funds. Now, for us, that's not a huge part of our budget, so it won't make a huge difference to our bottom line. But really, where we'll probably be most affected is income taxes, but that probably will be delayed in the sense that we won't really feel that until FY '22, because when we are getting our taxes collected next year, it will, it will have been for the previous year. So we're, we sort of see a one-year delay in income taxes. But the mayor has introduced a sort of austerity budget to help prepare us for future years of financial hardship. I can get into specifics if you have questions, but for now, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, did you want to say anything?
Thank you. I really appreciate your leadership on this, Jeffrey, and, and the hard work of Matt and Phil. The one thing I would say is it will be, as we move forward this next month, it will be nice to have just the FY '21 budget. I know we, you tried to show people all the different changes that were made, but I think it'll be really good to see a clean copy as well as the high-level five-year plan.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyghaaser, do you have a question or a comment?
I just want to thank the four of you very much for taking a turn at this and completing it on such short notice.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel. She needs to be unmuted.
Oh.
Okay.
There she is. Thank you.
Sorry, here I am. Just for Phil, I just wonder if you could just quickly explain again, if we lower our budgeted or expenses, doesn't that prevent us from getting into the rainy day fund? Because our, we only get into that if our expenses go over our revenues.
That's what I was saying, but I'll let Phil better answer the question. Phil, is, is Phil here?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you, Phil.
I'm unmuted. So first, let me say, I would, I just want to express my admiration to the, to the mayor and the rest of the council for foreseeing what may come in the future. I think a large part of that is due to the president of the council, who was on the council when there were very precipitous decline in revenues, and suddenly the town had to deal with income tax revenues going from $9,000 to $500,000, not just for one, but for two years. But it's very important that we do.
Matt, I think you should mute everybody, because it's not coming through clearly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't need to repeat that, do I, Matt?
No, no, we heard it, but it was starting to get.
All right, to answer Franny's question, we've designed the FY '21 budget and beyond so that there are sufficient unencumbered reserves to address any needs. So we're still trying to maintain the rainy day fund, which has all its restrictions, but recognizing those restrictions, we tried to make sure that there would be enough money in the unencumbered reserves. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Panner, do you have any questions? Yeah, I think I have to unmute him, Matt.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have one fast question. We have debt service obligations for our pool bond. I take it there's no risk of us defaulting on any of those and/or any other debt we have outstanding?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Serco.
No questions. Thank you very much for all that was doing.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to the item, discussion, public hearing motion to approve the following 2020 public events, the shred event on May 30th and the Somerset Kids pop-up marketplace on September 12th. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, let's see. Sorry, bear with me while I pull it up real quick. So I'll touch on the pop-up market. I think this is something that the town had done previously, and resident Nicole Toda had, had expressed interest in us redoing it, and this was.
Well, wait a minute, let, let me just say that the, it wasn't a town event, but the, the group that, that Nicole Toda requested permission, you know, this is basically, for both of these events, these are not town events, the, these are, well, they're, they are town events now, but, but it's basically the request of the, of the originators of the events for the use of the public space to put on their events. So that's what it is. And the reason why Nicole Toda wants to, is requesting approval tonight is they're not really sure it's going to be on September 12th, but they just want to know that the town would support the, them using the site on whatever day it is so they can start with their planning, but more than likely, they're going to come back with an alternative date. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, thank you. That, that pretty much covers it. That it's two events that are going to take place really on town property. And so, of course, everything's up in the air right now, but both of these events, I think that they, they wanted, or were requesting essentially the council's blessing to be able to hold those events when, when the timing is right, and they've, they've put in a couple of placeholder dates for us, but more just asking for broad, broader general support.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? I think you have to unmute her.
Sorry, Marnie.
No questions. Well, I guess, I guess the only thing is, these are just tentative dates, depending on how the world changes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Councilmember Zuyghaaser.
Thanks, thank you.
You have no questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Um, I mean, I guess this is the time when we need to bring up the fact that a resident has asked for, you know, the shredding event to not occur, so shouldn't we at least talk about that?
Absolutely.
Do you have, well, but do you have any questions right now? So your question?
I guess my question is, if it's not a town event, but we're giving our blessing, you know, it seems like we should still discuss the conditions of the event if, if there are residents who've complained about it, as opposed to just talking about scheduling.
Okay, so Matt, is Phyllis on the, is she still here?
Yep, we still have Phyllis.
Okay, so why don't you pose your question to Phyllis?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Phyllis heard the earlier comments from one of the residents about the noise of the event, and that person, I don't remember her name, Miriam.
Miriam Tabbas.
Asked if there was a different location for it. So I suppose if it's not during the pool season, maybe we could look at the pool parking lot. I don't, I don't know, but.
Phyllis, are you here?
Yeah.
What's your response?
It was held at the town hall just because it was, seemed to be the easiest place and accessible for a shred truck and for people to access in and out. And at the time it started, it involved the rental of the town hall, and I paid a fee. And subsequently, the last few years, partnered with the town environmental committee, and they do a collection of batteries and lights.
Let me point out that this, isn't it in the packet that the event was, was recommended by the town environment committee?
I'll, I'll unmute Robin and let Robin speak to that.
Because I had requested, I have been requesting that they submit a recommendation. Did they not do that?
Yes, there was, Robin, I don't know if you just want to answer that directly, but there is.
Actually, we recommended it in 2017 for multiple years, so that we, we thought, planning ahead, we, the original recommendation on the notes from it are from 2017, saying that, yes, we recommended this event and that we would work with Phyllis on Shady Grove Transfer Station Recycling, which is the batteries and LED and compact fluorescent lights that she's talking about.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any further questions?
I don't have any questions, really. I just, I guess, I guess I'm not sure if we've really addressed the question of noise, and maybe it is only a couple of hours, but somebody showed up for the meeting tonight and that, and made a point of it, so I'm wondering whether we should consider a different location if we're supporting this as a town blessed event. Looking at.
Brandy, the, that question came up a few years ago, I believe, with the county environmental committee. County, yeah, environmental people looked at it, and at the time, the town decided it was okay to proceed.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Panner, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilor Serco.
No questions.
Thank you. Are there further comments or questions from our residents or guests? Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
Oops. I'm sorry, I got Marnie muted.
Marnie, are you gonna?
Sorry.
Marnie, are you gonna make the?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to try and, and talk a little bit more about Franny's point. I do think it's unfortunate that we have some disappointed residents about where this loc, this event is located. It has been one of the most, one of our really popular events for the residents. I mean, people do show up and they do use it, and, and they have, we have coordinated to take things to the transfer station. Do you think there's anything we could do, short of moving where this is located, that would help the neighbors out? It isn't a very long period, but it is noisy when it is going on.
We, may I point out that we've only received one complaint about this?
Okay.
So it's, so the council will have to decide whether, because, and it hasn't really been verified that it is violating any kind of noise law either. So it's up to the council to decide. So are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll move that we support the two events that are listed in the agenda, the shred event and the kids, Somerset Kids pop-up market.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next to last item is the town manager's administrative and fiscal report.
Sure. I'll, I'll try to be brief since you all have the report, and as always, feel free if there's any specific questions that, that you have for me. So a couple of personnel things that I wanted to flag for everybody is that we've, we've brought on Linda as a full-time employee of the town. Linda's been an invaluable member of the town staff, and I've certainly leaned on her for her, at this point, institutional knowledge of the town, and I think that she has a really kind demeanor that is a great asset to the town staff in being a forward-facing and approachable town government. So I'm glad that we were able to do that, and that our staff is now all covered by the personnel manual that, that's been developed. So thank you, Linda, and congratulations, and we're, we're glad and feel lucky to have you and glad that you're going to continue to work for the town. The other is, I think I had mentioned this before, but Enrique had mentioned to me back in February that he was planning to retire at the end of June 2021. So still have plenty of lead time on that, but just something to think about. And as we get closer, maybe we can throw Enrique a nice retirement celebration for all of his years of hard work for the town. In terms of police, I just wanted to give a quick update, because Tony Galladora, who's kind of served as our de facto town chief of police, he got a promotion, and so he just has not been able to commit to very many hours on the town. And so he actually reached out to me and suggested that we have Steve Chung take his place and be our main point of contact with Montgomery County Police. And so I had a brief conversation with Steve. He agreed to it. The mayor and I are trying to, trying to arrange something to talk with him a little bit further for any ideas, any ideas that he might have, and just to, just to touch base with him moving forward. We have, of course, been affected by the coronavirus, so we are having staff work from home to the extent possible. And last week, Linda and I had a conversation with Enrique to arrange for rotational shifts with our maintenance staff so they avoid contact with each other as much as possible.
Excuse me, Matt, excuse me, can you just mute everybody, because the, my screen is starting to.
Go, go, all right, sorry. The, so the maintenance staff is, is going to be working on a rotational basis for the foreseeable future. We've, we've bought some gloves for them to use, and they'll be wearing and using face coverings as well, following the CDC's guidelines, and we'll just continue to monitor that and try to promote a safe environment for them and make sure they're, they're being as safe for their families and for Somerset residents as well. Otherwise, I'm just going to sort of leave it, leave it there. There's, everything else is kind of on the, on my report. The one thing I'd like to flag that maybe to have you think about is there is a property where a resident owns the two adjacent properties, and between the two, they've probably taken out, I don't have the report in front of me, but Tolbert, Tolbert totaled it up, and they've taken out about 10 trees between the two properties. And that's a little bit alarming. I will say that all the trees have been approved and were, were looked at by Tolbert, and so they were all dead, dying, or decaying. So it wasn't, it wasn't that the decision to take out the trees was necessarily wrong, but by finding this loophole in our code where they can just come and get one tree or two trees at a time, and the fact that they're split between these two properties means that the town has no reforestation plan in place, because the reforestation is only when they go to the council. And so I don't necessarily have a recommendation along with that. I know that the PNRC has looked at that and looking at maybe a one-for-one policy or one-for-one, and then maybe some exception policy, but I just wanted to sort of flag this one issue for you But I just wanted to sort of flag this one issue for you and sort of point out that there is that little loophole. I don't know if it's something that we want to take any action on or think about, but.
Well, actually, Matt, you know, we talked about that. And I think that I wanted to, that I'm planning to ask the committee to make a specific recommendation that perhaps can be placed on the work session agenda in the near future. Because it's a really, it's a loophole that isn't necessarily, it's a loophole to the current law, is all it is. It's not like new, it's not like a new law, like a study group might look at in terms of the tree canopy. It's a loophole in the current law. So I would like them to look at it. But thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have questions?
Well, Barbara may want to add something to this, but I think that the Parks and Natural Resources Committee actually had drafted some potential, either a report or potential legislation that they wanted to put forward on this topic, maybe last year or the year before. It's been identified as an issue by them over the years. Barbara, do you know more?
Okay, hold on. Do you have any other questions? We'll get to Barbara. Okay, thank you. Councilor Zuyi Hazar.
No, just as Marnie said, they have drafted something, and they have something. I'd be happy to talk to Kristin Kana about it, Jeffrey, unless you prefer to do so yourself.
No, I think that, I think it would be good if you, as the liaison, talked to them and encouraged them to put forth a recommendation to go to the work session because this isn't really a change. That's just a loophole that needs to be closed. It's not really a change of anything. So please request that they move forward. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Yes, this was actually on my list as one of the things I wanted to ask Matt about. Because I want to be clear that just because of the way the law is written, I don't necessarily see that this is a loophole that has actually caused problems. And I was going to ask Matt, I don't think this is a high priority, but I think before we make any changes that we need to look and see whether it's actually a problem that people take advantage of in a, you know, sort of cheating kind of way. I haven't heard anything about this fact pattern that says that these trees should not have come down. And people have reasons for choosing to take trees down at certain times. It's an expensive process. But I also think that I would be very wary of going from identifying a loophole to going straight to a tree-for-tree policy because that's not necessarily the fix for the loophole. The loophole is really a question about whether it's the mayor signing off on it or the council signing off on it. But let's just not go straight from identifying. Excuse me, Jeffrey, this is my moment to speak, and this was on my list. I just want to say that I don't want the instant thought to be that just because we've identified a loophole in our process that we then have to impose a more restrictive solution, which is a tree-for-a-tree, because that's not necessarily our policy agenda. I know it's been raised by the committee, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it.
But the purpose of this is to ask questions of Matt. Matt has made a recommendation.
I know.
But there'll be a process.
And that's what I wanted to do, that you're cutting me off.
But we're not deciding it tonight.
I know, but in response to Matt's point, you have brought up the proposal from the PNRC. And I'm pointing out that those are not necessarily, that's not necessarily the answer. That's all I want to say.
And just to be clear, I'm not necessarily endorsing that policy. I'm just bringing that up as an example because I know that it has been raised before.
Well, I'm saying, my response is that, yes, it is a loophole. In my experience, in 12 years, this particular resident is not the only one. And I'm not, I'm not saying that he is trying to take advantage of the system. I'm saying that this is a loophole, and I would like the committee to look at it and make a recommendation. And you will have the opportunity, Councilman Peel, to debate it all you want because you will be part of the decision. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Right.
Councilmember Paner, do you have any questions?
I do. First of all, I think Franny's making good points. And second of all, Matt, you said all of these trees were dead or dying and had to come down, right? Yes. So Jeffrey, that's not a loophole. And this is exactly the kind of, I don't know what, you know, what agenda you're trying to promote. If people have to take down a dead or dying tree, that's just a standard routine thing that property owners should be able to do so they don't fall on their house, their kids, or their neighbors. That's not a loophole. That is good governance.
Okay, well, you're entitled to your opinion.
No, don't cut us off, Jeffrey. It's very, very unfortunate for you to cut off Franny. I think that's inappropriate, and it's inappropriate for you to cut me off. So.
Okay, ask your question. What's your question? What's your question?
I'm trying to clarify that what happened here is not a loophole. It was a legitimate takedown of trees that were diseased or dying, correct, Matt?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
But it is a loophole.
No, Jeffrey, no.
Okay, you have your opinion, I have my opinion. Do you have any other questions?
Jeffrey, as it is your opinion.
Do you have any other questions?
Just to clarify that.
Thank you. Councilmember Serco.
Is he muted?
Oops. Yes, I was muted. Sorry about that, it's too slow. No further questions. A lot of discussion there. I wasn't expecting it.
Okay, the next item is the mayor's report. And I didn't do a written report today, which I will be doing tomorrow. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody, for the meeting.
Can I offer something to you guys? I'm sewing masks. If anybody would like a cloth mask made to your specifications, you can send me a message, and I'll make one for you as my gift.
I don't have one. I ordered one, but I don't know when it'll come. I'll take any one you have that's left over.
Oh, no, I will make one for your face, so.
Because I loved yours, Franny.
I'd be happy to make them. I'm enjoying it.
What do I have to tell you?
I'll be in touch.
Franny, because that will make Nancy eternally grateful. I'm wearing a BCC scarf around, and she finds that.
Nothing wrong with that. You got to represent the barons. Anyway, you can be in touch with me if you want me to make one. I'm making about four per day. I'm not able to make the ones that the hospital wants. They're too complicated, so I'm just making them for friends.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care, everyone.